The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, June 9th, 2022. R Plus Energies White Pine Pump Storage Project Presentation, June 9th, 2022.
For the record, my name's Donna Bath, and I'm here as a private citizen. Last, a couple of meetings ago, I gave you a rather large packet of my concerns on the pump storage, and I would urge you to once again review that packet. I have additional concerns since that time. The pump storage has said on numerous times in public meetings that they are taking Duck Creek side off the maps, so to speak, and they're not going up the Duck Creek side anymore. However, if you go check on the FERC documents that are filed most recently by the company and also in the BLM documents, they have not changed any of their maps, and Duck Creek is still very much on the Duck Creek side of the mountain. The proposal now hearsay is, and maybe they'll enlighten us tonight, is to go up what is known locally as the Peacock Road. For all the locals that have been up Peacock, that's quantum. I've been up it once, and I have no desire to go up or down Peacock ever again. You're gonna have to traverse that mountain back and forth. I certainly hope they will have to do an EA, and at the minimum, an EIS. The EA was certainly a coast session. These gentlemen were not involved in this process. I certainly hope from going forward that they will definitely include the city as a cooperating agency and the railroad as a cooperating agency. We will have a seat at the table to know what's being discussed at these meetings, and you'll be able to be informed and make good decisions for our community. And I just want to go on record in saying I oppose it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the Ely City Council. I am Mark Bassett, President of the Nevada Northern Railway Foundation. The foundation has submitted comments to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, commonly known as FERC. The foundation has expressed its serious concerns regarding R Plus Energies' proposed pump storage project. These concerns are on the incomplete studies and lack of studies to address the impact of their project on the railway, a national historic landmark that is jointly owned by the city and the foundation. The R Plus studies prepared so far have not adequately addressed the foundation's ongoing preservation efforts, the impact on our operations, and the economic impact on tourism in White Pine County. The foundation has requested that FERC direct R Plus to complete and initiate the following studies: a cultural resources study, a visual and aesthetic resources study, a recreation resources study, the Nevada Northern Railway Visitor Use and Experience Study, a social-economic impact study, and a study of the impact of the current mega drought on the reliability of the proposed project. On April 9th, 2021, the foundation notified R Plus of its concerns and requested R Plus expand the proposed studies to address our various concerns. R Plus never made those requested study improvements. As more details of the project had become available, the foundation's unease regarding the project has increased. The foundation's various concerns arise mainly from R Plus's proposal to construct and insert their significant power infrastructure between and in the line of sight of two of the cities in the foundation's tracks. The hotline has been used by the foundation. It started excursion trains there 35 years ago. Additionally, the foundation has plans underway to restore our jointly-owned mainline tracks to McGill. The foundation has received a $10 million Southern Nevada Public Lands Management grant for this project. Opening the mainline will create valuable new recreational and economic opportunities for both the foundation and our community. R Plus's projects, lower reservoir, tunnel portal, substation, access route, and transmission lines would all be visible from our two tracks. This would compromise our railway passengers' experience. The pristine viewship currently enjoyed by our passengers would likely be spoiled by a power generation project that is inaccurately studied. The outcome is not difficult to imagine. The project could fatally damage the economic health of the foundation. The foundation believes it is imperative that the studies be completed to ensure the viability of the cities and the foundation's railroad. Thank you.
My name is Bill Wilson. I'm a retired geologist. With all the presentations we've had and comments, the thing that has been ignored is the geotechnical stability of the plant sites. The area from Valconner's Pass to Duck Creek Turnoff, that line along the edge of the mountains is the remnants of the, still active, they call it the Braguer's fault. So, there have been one, two, three, four, five earthquakes, recent earthquakes, and the last recent, I don't know how they count recent, but recorded earthquakes, that are of magnitude three to four. And with, I'm worried about that lower pond. It was a big pond being hammered daily by 80,000 tons of water, and then having that pull back up the hill, that ground is gonna be squished and reflex, every day. And that, back with the strain on the unconsolidated gravels that the site is gonna be built on, and any hidden faults that they, hopefully find with physical work, have to be looked at, but I think this is a danger that we need to pay attention to. Thank you.
Business. Item one, Mayor Robertson, R Plus Energies representative, discussion only. Presentation regarding White Pine Pump Storage Projects, draft license application and project update. We do have Greg Copeland here to make the presentation, and staff, and help.
For the record, I'm Mr. Greg Copeland, R Plus Hydro Program Manager, regarding the White Pine pump type of project. So, Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity here, and also, I appreciate the chance to come in and provide an update on where the project is right now. I'm gonna move this a little bit closer, so you're recording while you work. And I appreciate all of the comments that have been provided today and as a part of the process that we're involved in. This is a process that requires feedback on a regular basis, and it helps us to inform how we can improve things. There's a couple of things that have actually been brought up that I think we could address as a part of this presentation, and I think might help to provide some additional information and some clarity. So, just to start off, a little bit of background on what R Plus Hydro is. R Plus Hydro is a wholly owned subsidiary of R Plus Energies. You may have also seen in reference to GridForce or GridFlex, and there's a partnership agreement that's in place with GridForce between R Plus Energies. We're the leading developer of new pump-to-storage hydro projects in the United States. We actually control 50% of all the current interconnection applications and queue items, queue positions for planned or proposed pump storage projects. That's nationwide, actually. We actually have a number of projects that are pending across the entire country. R Plus Hydro has 12 pump storage projects in various stages of development across the U.S., and the White Pine Power Project is, White Pine Water Power is the output of the particular project. Go ahead. One of the things that I wanted to emphasize is that White Pine Power and R Plus Energies is also a subsidiary company of gardener companies. I don't know if you know the gardener companies, but they have a significant social impact and social involvement in the state of Utah and throughout the country, throughout the western United States. And R Plus Energies has adopted, in a lot of respects, the same culture and attitude about the way that we approach community involvement and support. These are a couple of examples of that engagement and that support. We just, within the last three to four weeks, put in place this scholarship program that's a reflection of our graphite solar project that's in Carbon County. That's a $75,000 a year scholarship program that is designed specifically for STEM-type of applicants that are local within the Carbon County area, not only STEM, but also other applicants that we provide. The intent here is to provide that for local applicants and not just open it up for a whole bunch of people. Further, we also have been involved in White Pine County and Ely in particular. We sponsored the White Pine High School robotics team to attend the VEX Robotics World Championship. Recently, we provided a grant of $10,000 to that robotics team to be able to attend that in concert with gardener families that matched the donation from R Plus Energies. We also have a community service committee that recently ran through our food drive that donated over 1,200 cans of food to the Carbon County Utah Food Bank. It was a big deal because they were just about empty. Also, you may be unaware that we're actually a major sponsor of the City of Ely's fireworks display that's coming up on the 4th of July. And then we're also considering sponsorship for the local Higa mountain biking team that's in the area. We have on our staff, in fact, a Team USA bicyclist, former team member for National Recognition, is also interested in helping to support that effort. Go ahead. So, the economic benefits for the pump storage project, some of these slides have been reviewed by others before, but I think this is important to note. This is information that has been derived from two separate socioeconomic reports that have been generated. One from HDR, which is a consultant contract that we have that has worked with us. The other is from Zions Bank, and these numbers are from both those reports. It's estimated between 300 and 500 jobs over three to five years during a construction phase. Those are mostly skilled equipment operators and craft labor, so it's not bringing in a bunch of PhDs that would be working on the project locally. These are people that have the skills locally. The long-term operational phase is estimated for about 35 full-time employees that will be involved in this project. This is a large-scale equipment, fairly complex equipment that requires regular maintenance, and those people will be involved in that. Taxes, there's a local annual tax revenue that's expected to be at least $10 million per year, and that's after any abatement potential that would come from the state more than. Those numbers are at the minimum level. So, if you consider that the county budget, for instance, is around that number, it actually reflects a doubling of the county budget as a part of FERC. Go ahead. So, just as a project update, and I'm trying to keep the point here so we don't run over and we have an opportunity for any questions. This is a closed-loop project. It's an approximately $2.3 billion capital investment that will be required. It's 1,000 megawatts of generating and pumping capacity. What a lot of people don't realize is that it's a capacity that can be useful for actually up to eight hours of full output. That is equivalent to 8,000 megawatt-hours of electrical generation per day. That's about one-eighth of Nevada's peak power demand at any one time. In other words, Nevada's peak power generation or load is about 8,000 megawatts. That includes the entire state. This particular project would be able to replace, for instance, a generation facility that was no longer available, and will be able to supplement that. It's primarily directed toward being able to provide a backup storage capacity for renewable energy generation. As the state follows through with its goals and efforts to try and integrate renewable energy into our program, there is a need for storage backup capacity, because everybody knows when it doesn't always glow, the sun doesn't always shine. And in those cases, you have to be able to provide a backup so there's stability on the grid. This particular plant has a rapid-response generation type. A lot of people don't realize, early kinds of development of a pump storage project had two separate kinds of units, where you had a pump and a generation unit. These are very sophisticated, very large units. They're a pump turbine that actually generate when water's flowing in one direction, and then when you put power to the motor, it actually can pump the water with the same units, using a Francis main kind of impeller. So, the rapid response is related to the, if it's in a pumping mode, it can actually shift to a generation mode in just a matter of a few seconds. That's almost as crazy as you think about like a pro-generation plant, a gas-fired plant, takes several minutes, upwards of 17 minutes to come on board. This particular project, if it's in a pumping mode, pumping the water up to the upper reservoir, can, within a few seconds, be suddenly shifted so that it can be generated if needed on demand. There's also the site benefits with regard to the operational benefits for these kinds of projects, pump storage projects, for grid stability. Grid stability includes a lot of different elements: reactive power control, frequency power control, grid inertia, grid stability. That frequency support is what causes, in some cases, when there is grid instability for your lysoflicker. This kind of a project actually inherently provides the stability to keep that kind of thing from happening, once it's actually operating. Go ahead. All right, so before we start this, and Kevin is keen to start this, this is a video simulation of a project. It's actually available on our website, so if you want to see this at your leisure, or if you want to show it to your family, or if you want to look at it in more detail, you can do that. This video simulation is, it was generated by our engineering consulting firm. There are within the video simulation two view locations, viewpoint locations, so you need to be aware and watch it looking for that. One of those is from the simulated location of the rail line looking over the lower reservoir. The other one is from the road looking up the mountain, so you can see what that infrastructure looks like. The video simulation actually is sequential, so it provides for you an idea of how the different project, different project elements are working together. There is also a cross-sectional view showing how that works within the mountain. And that's one of the things that needs to be emphasized here. The things that normally make noise in a substation, for instance, are transformers. The transformers for this project will be located inside the mountain. What you see in this display and other displays is a switch station, which is allowing for the ability to isolate the project necessary for whatever reasons, whatever purposes there might be. You can isolate different circuits, you can do that kind of thing from a switch station. But the transformers that are specifically active are gonna be located inside the mountain along with pump turbine generators. Go ahead. Now, this is a viewpoint from 93 looking back up. Give you a perspective on the size of this powerhouse. There's a small person on the upper deck up there that you can see. It's about eight stories high, about three-quarters of the length of a football field. You can see the small video simulation people on the upper deck on the top there to give you an idea of the size of the pump house inside the mountain. So, this gentile line actually is immediately adjacent to the currently existing energy corridor at Mons from Gondor to Robinson Sun. So, the gentile line, the cables and the structures are actually immediately adjacent to the existing structures. So, there's no gap in between, there's no additional different kind of visual impact other than it should be exactly aligned with the current existing alignment of that transmission line. Go ahead. So, again, as I mentioned, the, that video is actually available online, so you can see that on our website if you want to view that, if you want to repeat it, if you want to look at it closer or any way you want to, that's available online. So, any, I wanted to ask if there's any questions about the video or any of the features that were there before I continue, if you will, here.
Are there any questions? Ms. Bassett? Please come up to the microphone.
First of all, I appreciate you coming because there are a lot of questions. What we need to have for the record, for the record, Donna Bath, private citizen. And again, I appreciate you coming to this meeting. We have not had any public hearings for the EIA, and we get a lot of conflicting information. Your EIA, or BA that was done by HDR, I feel has a lot of misinformation out, and I've been accused of handing out false information, but I'm telling you, it's coming right off your documents or BLM documents. So, I take exception to that. The one thing that I did notice in your video, and I don't know if you noticed it, Mark, but you show a pond or a reservoir there, but it doesn't seem to have a fence or lighting around it in the video. Is there going to be fence and lighting around it? Because certainly, you know, this looks like a wonderful duck pond that you're gonna go by on a train, and the reality is, you've got to have security because you've got to keep animals out of there, and you're gonna have lighting because of the security. And those are some of the questions that I would have just on that side. On the Duck Creek side, I've noticed that your reservoir has now moved from down below, which would be right directly across from our property. And by the way, we've never been contacted by your company, which, if that pond lets loose, we're in your direct line. Now, that reservoir seems to look like it's right on the very top, the exact top of the mountain. So, has that changed? And if so, if you've dropped the access to the Duck Creek side, how are you gonna get up there? Do you have permission now from the property owners to come in on the Duck Creek side? Have you gained permission to come up on the Duck Creek side?
So, can I address those questions?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So, as any complex project, there are a lot of things that you learn, and as a part of learning, you apply those. The actual location of the upper reservoir has been adjusted for primary sage grouse habitat area to try and remove it back away from it. There were two considerations for moving out of the Duck Creek Basin side. One of them was independent access. We could have found a way with BLM property to be able to get up to the upper reservoir from the Duck Creek side without crossing any private land requirements. But what we-
I don't think that's correct.
Yeah, but what we have decided is because of, there are two like locations on the Duck Creek Basin side, and that is PHMA, primary habitat for sage grouse on the Duck Creek Basin side. Because of those two considerations, we made the decision, actually, in this past spring, after all of the work had been complete with other access routes, to readjust that. And my engineering company is actually in the process right now of completing a study on what the access will be from the step to the side. I have a meeting on Monday about what those options are.
But your map shows an access road on the Duck Creek side.
So, that video and the map that exists right now will eventually be changed once we have identified the route from the step to the side.
Will your BA change, Ben? Or are you gonna have to do another supplemental BA? That's my question.
So, we will be addressing that with the BLM. We have a supplemental EA, not supplemental EA, but a supplement to the 299 application that will be submitted to the BLM as soon as we identify what that route will be. There is, the study that's being done by the engineering company, they're going to present us with those findings on Monday, and we have two weeks to respond to that. There will be a process in place that will be taking place as a part of that, which will include consultation with the BLM as a result. Now, you had mentioned earlier about access around Peacock Ridge. The access to Peacock Ridge is only for the technical studies. It's a temporary access that will only be for being able to do the borehole drilling that we need to do this fall. It will only be accessed for six weeks during the time frame. It is not, as far as I know right now, what is being considered as a part of the permanent access, but we'll find out on Monday.
And where is your access for borehole three?
That's the one I'm talking about. It's up at that ridge on-
You're gonna go up Peacock to get the borehole?
Yes.
All right, you're gonna-
Yes, ma'am. And in fact, Kevin and I have actually driven up there, and I've been up there several times, so, and-
You taking your excavator out there?
We're, we're, I mean, excavator-
Well, your equipment.
Yeah, the drill rig itself, we have a crew coming out next week, and we're actually gonna be doing some checks for that to make sure that all of that-
I don't wanna hog this, but I have, if anybody else wants questions-
If I may be helpful, if you finish the presentation, ask, and ask, and we can make-
Can I ask?
Yes.
Okay, so I have another question related to this. You're gonna pump our coal-fired power out of Gondor Substation, out of Robinson. You're gonna use our coal-fired power to go up the mountain. You're gonna pump the water up the mountain with our coal-fired energy. And then when it comes down the mountain, it magically becomes green energy, and you're gonna put it in the power line that goes to Reno and Urrington and onto California. And it is gonna be expensive green energy. How much of that power is gonna stay in White Pine County?
Okay, so let me address that, and then, in fact, what Kevin mentioned is a good idea, and go ahead and present that.
That's great.
So, the, there is no interconnection to Gondor. Interconnection agreement that we have was approved by Energy is for Robinson Sun Substation. That's why the gentile line is required. That energy that comes out of this particular project will be available for a variety of sources. It can come from any place that the utility wants to provide it from, and it's not specifically from a coal plant or from anywhere else. That is up to the utility to provide, and decide that. That's part of grid management.
And is the utility and the energy, because-
That's where the interconnection is, that's where the interconnection-
Right, not, not either. Okay, so not seen.
Okay. All right, one of the things that had been mentioned-
And it is going to be expensive green energy. How much of that power is going to stay in White Pine County?
Okay, so let me address that then. In fact, what Kevin mentioned is a good idea. We'll go ahead and present that.
That's great.
So the, there is no interconnection to Gonder. Interconnection agreement that we have is approved by Energy is for Robinson Sub Station. That's why the gentile line is required. That energy that comes out of this particular project will be available for a variety of sources. It can come from any place that the utility wants to provide it from. And it's not specifically from a coal plant or from anywhere else. That is up to the utility to provide them to decide that. That's current grid management.
And is the utility and the energy, because...
That's where the interconnection is. That's where the interconnection is.
Right, not Mount Leaver.
Right.
So not seen.
Okay. All right, one of the things that had been mentioned...
Is there any questions on the thing?
Okay, I'll just wait. My comments are all out there. Go ahead. So the facilities themselves, this is a 4,100 feet story...